Good evening, everybody. We're going to begin our meeting shortly. Mr. Sanders, this is my team. Please start the Zoom session. As a reminder for all the board members who are here, the mics are turned off when you are speaking. Please turn them on or close your mouth. It helps a lot with the acoustics and the recording of the meeting. Just wait a couple of moments for people to log in through the Zoom. And Mr. Kuzmareski, just another moment. This video of the Maua Board of Education is open to numbers of the public to be physically present. Numbers of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be live streamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 851-5778-2001, and the required password is 051766. It was updated on the website.
So we have the old one?
Yes. Everyone else has the new one? Mr. Leder, roll call, please. Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Ms. Conoco. Dr. Morethy.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Cohn.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Kuzmareski.
Here.
Adequate notice of agenda in this meeting has been provided to the Ridgwood News and the Record specifying that the Maua Board of Education will meet on October 13, 2021, at the Minister of Offices 60 Ridge Road, Maua, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Please rise for a salute to the flag. Mr. Gallo, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions on our new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position within the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Please get a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva is seconded by Mr. Gallo. Anyone having agenda questions? If seen not, please get a motion to close the meeting. Dr. Morethy is seconded by Mr. Gallo. Dr. Dettoro, do you have a report?
I do, thank you. Two things that I wanted to bring up to the board's attention. Last week, we took part in a week of respect. It's something that is a K-12 experience across all the different schools. There are a number of different learning experiences that the students were able to take part in, whether it's discussions that they had surrounding ways in which they can be respectful to their peers and understanding. Also, a way to bring the community together, their school community together, through the use of door decorating contests, themed days that the students and the staff were able to dress up in different themes that range from Sports Day to Superhero Day and much, much more, Dr. Fair. And also, there were a lot of discussions that surrounded ways in which we can continue to build that sense of kindness and respect, not only in our school but in our community. So it's a very valuable time that we were able to take part in K-12 last week. I strongly encourage everyone to take a look at our social media accounts across all the different schools. I know all the different schools posted things on Twitter, which then, if they attach hashtag Maua connects, they're on our website as well. So anyone who doesn't have Twitter can go to our website, and there's a feed there as well. Yes, oh, not yesterday, Monday, our district took part in a professional development day. In my opinion, it was a very successful day. It's something that we're going to look at, the feedback from our teachers. Obviously, they were taking part in it, and we want to make sure that we are attentive to what they're looking to do and grow as professionals. The topics that were covered in that day ranged from authentic learning, engagement of our community partners, developing students' academic knowledge and their emotional intelligence, assessment, data discussions, and equity work that was specific to the Amistad mandate by the New Jersey State Bar Foundation. So there were a range of topics that were covered in our professional development day. The teachers worked extremely hard, not only learning, but collaborating and building things that they can utilize in their classroom moving forward. I can say with absolute pride that the content and themes that were covered in that day were directly connected to our strategic plan. So we're going to continue to move forward with accomplishing those goals over the next five years. Last but not least, I'd be remiss not to say and advertise the Thunderbird Run, which is on October 24. I know all the schools are trying to get some excitement from their students, but also their staff members. I hope it's a great turnout. Maua Schools Foundation does so much for our students and staff here. It's a great way for us to come together as a community, enjoy some time together, and also give to a great cause. So if you haven't done so already, please go on and register. There's the 5K, then there's the two-mile walk, but then there's also the kids' run as well. So please get the word out if you can. That's all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Leder. Good evening. Just to share with the board as well as members of the public, I believe Mr. Gallo may also mention it during his report tonight. We've had a couple of meetings, the facility audit meetings with land associates as part of our strategic plan and items that we're doing this year, aligns with some board and district goals for the year. So those meetings are ongoing. We've had two so far. Also, that at the last few meetings, we've approved a couple of professional service arrangements with land associates and Tarkus Milliman, our architects, for different projects in the district. Those are moving forward in October's month where we're processing several state reports. My office is also taking care of that, finishing up some grants from last year, covering them forward into this year, and other state reports of these. That's my report. Great, thank you very much. Dr. Fair.
Yes, we have two retirements on this evening's agenda, 18A and 18B. We'll start with Agenda Item 18B, Brenda Jobb. She's newer to our district. She's been here for just over a year. She started with us last year as an instructional and a non-instructional paraprofessional over at Ramco Ridge. Brenda is friendly and vibrant, and she's worked with students as well as assisting tremendously in the ridge's main office. We wish Ms. Jobb the best in her retirement. We also have Drew Churchson for Agenda Item 18A. Over Drew's 16 years at Region One, Drew has been an invaluable part of the team, whether managing the non-public routes, balancing the accounts receivable, or acting as the in-house tech support. Drew has approached every task with skill and professionalism, not to mention he's known for carrying around his Dunkin' Donuts coffee, which is his trademark. He'll be remembered as an loyal coworker, a thoughtful friend, and a consummate gentleman. So we wish Drew all the best in his retirement. I know he started here after another career, so it's a retirement well-deserved. The second piece, on the upper right-hand side of the agenda, you'll see revised. I just want to remind the board that there are no asterisks. The reason it's revised is because we've removed two resolutions, a leave replacement and a leave of absence that we hope to place on the next board agenda. And I think three board meetings ago, I mentioned Executive Order 253, which is Governor Murphy's requirement for vaccination status or onsite testing or mandated weekly testing for staff members. So I want to report our vaccination statuses as a district. Of our 519 Maua employees, 485 are vaccinated. So that's 93.4% of our Maua employees are fully vaccinated. Of our vendor employees, so those are the employees who work for outside agencies, or outside vendors who work onsite, 130 of our 139 employees are also fully vaccinated. So 93.5% are fully vaccinated. This includes our substitute agency, our bus drivers, and custodial staff who work with Pritchard. So I want to thank all of our school nurses for gathering all this information because it was due to them on October 1st. They did a really great job organizing and getting all of that set up. We also sent a survey to high school families because we wanted to get a sense of what our vaccination status looked like for our high school students. So of our 876 high school students, 325 have provided vaccination proof. So that's 37.1% of our high school students are fully vaccinated. So what we've learned from the contact tracing process is if a student, which has been the case pretty frequently, if a student is identified as a close contact and they are fully vaccinated, we have that proof on file, those students have been able to return back to the classroom immediately if they're not presenting any symptoms. We also communicated with our staff that we have signed up with a vendor to complete onsite testing here at Maua. So those staff members who remain unvaccinated will be able to be tested here weekly. Once we have that set up, we will obviously be providing information to our staff and will also provide the details related to where it will be centralized and those hours. The contact tracing process, we've tried our best to communicate, over-communicate what's been going on with the contact tracing process. We've learned that the trend is a little different from last year. So most of our cases this year of COVID-positive are students. When students are wearing a mask, they are not identified as close contacts. So we immediately go to lunch, and that's where our contact tracing primarily starts, and then that conversation takes place. We've been able to connect with Town Rec, who's been able to be very communicative in terms of close contacts. And we are finding, and this is no surprise, students out of school, social interactions overall are also impacting our COVID cases. So we also reached out about travel advisory. I know that some of the parents had reached out for clarification. We're in a place where, as we do with everything, we will look to potentially reevaluate in November, but we're in a place where, in following the New Jersey Department of Health, like we did towards the end of last year, the most recent guidance from the Department of Health speaks to travel, where it states, "While there is no statewide travel advisory or mandate in place at this time, schools are encouraged to have a policy for exclusion for students and staff that travel that is consistent with CDC travel recommendations." So that's where we are at this point. As we know, the Department of Health is essentially the rule of law when it comes to public health matters, and they have directly referred to the CDC recommendations. So that's where we are with COVID updates, COVID procedures. And also, you'll see here, just to switch over, we've been talking about the Thunderbird Partnership Program. Dr. Rovino and I have worked together on getting this launched, my office from a human resources perspective, and Dr. Rovino from a curriculum and program perspective. So we wanted to just give a brief overview of what this program looks like because we've been mentioning it so frequently, and just review what those five different types of partnership programs look like.
So there's a real need for us to have experts in the classroom. And we say, why, right? We've never done this before. Experts in the classroom bring a whole new level of learning to what is going on in the classroom. Not only do they show career possibilities and they show their passion for what they do, but they also bring relevance to our curriculum, and they make real-world connections happen every day. So that is why we want all of our experts. Anybody in the audience that's an expert, please sign up. It's my little plug. But that's why we want you with our kids and in our classrooms, because you will make the learning real for them. We have five partnerships that you can get involved with. So the first partnership is called Experts in the Classroom, and this is something that is more traditional. We know about this, right? We have speakers that come into our classrooms all the time. But I want you to think about this in a little bit of a different way. There are other ways to become an expert in the classroom. You can come in and do a talk. You can be a co-teacher, where you're working with the other teacher in the classroom to present content. You could even give feedback. So if our kids are presenting a product or a launch of a product or a presentation, you could be the one sitting there, just like at a board meeting, giving them feedback on what they did. You could even be part of the process when they're planning and implementing or thinking about, or you could be questioning them. So Experts in the Classroom, there's many different ways to come in. You don't have to give a big speech. You could actually be working with the kids as they're developing.
So the second partnership is Professionals Supporting Professionals. And this is just an opportunity. It's a little less vague in terms of if by chance one of our experts is potentially busy with their own workplace, this is an opportunity for a teacher to utilize that expert in terms of reaching out. So for instance, if we have a digital media class working on something in terms of edits, this might be an opportunity for the teacher of the digital media class, as well as the class, to reach out to that expert, ask questions, potentially Zoom with them, and get their feedback on what the project could look like. An expert fact checker, a teacher could use this while they're planning. Maybe it's a STEAM activity that they want to work on a project that's related to a bigger problem, and they would like some information from an expert. They could do that while planning, or again, they could reach out during the actual lesson itself.
The third way to get involved is to be a community service partner. So many of our businesses in the community have time where their employees have to give back to the community at large. This is a way to do that. So you could actually come in and give back for your time in your business, but actually come into our schools and help us do some community projects. So while we're trying to give back to our community, you can help and guide those thoughts and those discussions in how we think about partnering with our outside community and helping them. The other way is that our kids can join you. So if you're a nonprofit or you do charitable work, our kids can partner with you to make your mission come true. So we can come to you, or you can come to us, but we'll have our kids working with you to understand what nonprofits do, what charities do, and all the good work that can be done when we do it together.
The fourth opportunity is great potential for our students. So I feel like we've been building traction with our structured learning experience for our students to see what jobs look like, right beyond just what we know as just typical. This gives students the opportunities to shadow or observe in an internship experience. Students may serve as flies on the wall in terms of just observing from afar, whether it's through Zoom or just observing in the workplace, what a meeting might potentially look like. Work site tours, speaking events, and perhaps more immersive experiences like an extracurricular program that could potentially be connected to our career pathways at the high school and the middle school.
And the final way that you can get involved with our schools is through Find Your Passion. So we all want our kids to know where they want to go, but at 16 and 15 and 13 and 10, they might not know that, right? So we need your help. We need you to come in and show what you're passionate about. Show what you do in everyday life. And help being a mentor is one of those ways. So you can come in to do homework help and just help with classes and help with socialization and talk through kind of the things that you went through with your child, with your child mentor or mentee. You can also connect with a passion project. So some of our kids will be involved in passion projects in the future that have to do with something they're really interested in, and that might align with the work or the field that you're in. And you can be a mentor to those children through their passion project experience. The other way that we're really, we're kind of searching for other ways to expose our kids to what careers are out there, and we're looking at scheduling a cycle for our middle school in order to launch into our pathways program at the high school, where we're going to have different guest speakers come in. So by the time you were done with your cycle, your child might experience 20 to 25 different jobs that they could go into in math, right? In the math world, where can I go? In the science world, where can I go? What does it mean for me to use literature in life? So we're hoping to launch that as well.
So this is a really awesome opportunity to bring curriculum to life. We already have 100 potential partners already signed up. We've also been in touch with the Maua Chamber of Commerce, who we will be reaching out to all of the local businesses in Maua. The Chamber of Commerce is also connected to the region. So we're also going to be reaching out to over 300, 350 businesses that are local that we hope to partner with as well.
Thank you very much. If you already have signed up, don't worry. We are not forgetting about you. We have your name on the list. And if you're new to our list, we'll be sending out welcome letters to you as well. Thank you.
If I could just add one quick statement to that. As Dr. Fair was saying and Dr. Rovino was saying, our contacts are building, and they're coming at the most unique times. Something that I was really excited to hear about with Professional Development Day is that Mr. Pascal, long story short, Mr. Pascal was in Pennsylvania at a band performance, and he saw a local fair. And at the fair, he saw someone who was doing woodworking. But not just woodworking, but woodworking using a CNC router. And that's one of the computer programs that we have here. So he engaged that person. That person, ironically enough, lives in New Jersey. He came up on Monday to teach our teachers different techniques that they can utilize with the CNC router and to take it a step further. So that would be that Professionals Supporting Professionals dynamic of this program. But to take it a step further, they asked him also to come in and work with our students and give them feedback on the different types of programs that they're feeding through the CNC router. So just in his work with our teachers, I don't know if the board can see this, this is what they built using the program on Monday. So this is just some programming and some different code that they utilized. And this, I thought, was very interesting. They're repurposing some of the plexiglass that we have. This is a guard that we use for the woodworking shop that they already used a laser cutter to create program. So this is something that every single interaction that we have with either parents or community members, we're constantly trying to create opportunities to bring them in, whether it's inside of Maua or someone outside of Maua, because obviously that's a very unique treat and trade. So we wanted to make sure that we were looking at all the different subject matters. So that's just one example of one of the opportunities that we can use using the Thunderbird Partnership Program.
Thank you very much. I'll take that. Put that on the wall. That's nice. Absolutely wonderful stuff.
We discussed in our meeting that that's not just for the class of 93, just in case.
I have 93. Just a couple of quick things for me tonight. I want to send big kudos and congratulations out to our Thunderbird marching band. They're doing very well this year. If you come out to a football game, you've seen them. I know they were in Ramsey for a competition a couple of weeks back and came in second. They've just been doing very well. For those, Mr. Bittner and his whole crew there. And for the girls' varsity soccer team, just Dean Emerson in the county playoffs, sorry, the county tournament, and they're moving on to the quarterfinals against Portland. In other news, an update to the public and the board. The Thunderbird Cafe is open. I'm making an announcement on behalf of the Maua High School Sports Boosters. The new president is Mary Beth Duffy. Vice president is Kate Kuzmareski. I guess she got roped into that. But I've been actually slinging hot dogs and pretzels the past three times we've been open. It's a lot of fun. What I'm saying to the public is if you, even if you don't have a high school student, but if you do have a high school student, it benefits all athletic programs. It gives out scholarships. But they need volunteers, 10 minutes, an hour, whatever. We opened for the first time during a football game, and it was chaos, but it was a lot of fun. And then we opened for a soccer game. And who would have thought, the soccer game at halftime, there had to be 100 kids and parents there buying coffee. It all goes back to the Sports Boosters, so it's a good program. But we certainly need volunteers for that. I'd be more than happy to keep volunteering. I don't have a choice. But it's great to see something that, you know, we had planned and envisioned, planned and built over the course of several years and several budgets. And to see it finally open, because we completed it right before COVID hit, so it wasn't able to open then. But it's absolutely a beautiful facility. The bathrooms are great. It's great having bathrooms there for the restroom facilities for people at the football games or soccer games. So they're not going back in the building. Helps with all of that. But again, reach out to, if not Mary Beth, if you don't have her information, John Pascal will put you in touch. They're certainly looking for new members and volunteers for anything they could do. So that's all I got. Thank you very much. Board committee reports. Dr. Park.
The Technology Committee met on October 4th to discuss the district's laptop leases. There are currently three leases, one for the high school and middle school, one for Joyce Kilmer, and one for the K-5 schools. The high school and middle school lease is expiring, so a survey was sent out to find out what kind of laptops would best replace the ones that we currently have, which led to the ProBook 440. The ProBook 440 has the performance, the correct number of USBs and screen size that the majority of people were looking for. A public bid will be put out soon to see who can provide these ProBooks for the most cost-effective price, as well as for reasons of transparency. So if the bid is put out soon, the laptops should arrive around June or July, which would mean they would be ready for distribution in the fall.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other, Dr. Morethy.
I thought we were just going around the room. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kuzmareski. So we did have our instruction and curriculum meeting this morning, our October meeting. Just to piggyback on what Dr. Dettoro spoke about, we got a very comprehensive report from the curriculum supervisors regarding the professional development that took place. And it was really exciting. They were excited. The feeling was that teachers were very excited. I think, look, realistically, there might have been some hesitancy going into this year. I mean, a lot of things had changed. But I think the theme we kept hearing across levels from supervisors was that by the end of the day, teachers were energized. They were really excited about making sure that they met their students' needs where they needed to be, and that they're really looking forward to a very good year. And most important, keeping in mind the guidance answered a long-term plan of the strategic plan. So that's what kept coming up, that all of the things that they're working on in PD for professional development is related to that strategic plan. So that was very exciting. And I'm glad my, sorry, Dr. Dettoro, mentioned about the gentleman who came in for woodworking, because I was actually going to share that story. I thought that was kind of cute that, you know, Mr. Pascal met someone along the way, and it turned into a very good resource. The other thing was, we also had a report about elementary as well. So we had secondary, what the secondary PD was about, across content areas. And then we also had a report about K-5. Again, similar themes in that. We also had an update on mindfulness and the fact that there is an exciting parent academy coming up tomorrow night, and that's with our, like, I think our resident expert, we can call her, Carla Cantillo-Filibert. And she's going to be presenting 7:00 PM on trauma-informed strategies, again, coming out of this whole year. This is in partnership with the Maua Municipal Alliance, so we thank them also for their continued support. The other piece with mindfulness that we were really excited to hear about is that at the district... is that at, at the district level and at each school building, there are two coaches that have been, uh, specifically trained, but with, um, Carla, um, regarding mindfulness and mindful practices. So this is again, going back to mentoring, teachers mentoring each other, uh, and working together. So I think that's really exciting. Um, we also had an update on the Thunderbird Partnership Program. Uh, we, you know, again, encourage everyone to please participate. Um, it's a great, great program and, and really lends itself to our strategic plan as well. So thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gallo.
I have a brief report from the Finance Facilities Committee. We are two schools down in terms of our land engineering audits. Um, today we met with, uh, the team, uh, to review the status of Betsy Ross. On 9/29, we met to review the high school complex. And when I say the high school complex, I mean the main building, building five, building seven, and the athletic grounds. This is a very big effort for our district. It's a key part of our strategic plan. Um, doing this right and being committed to executing it well will save money for our taxpayers and provide a safe and efficient school, uh, environment for our students. I'm, I just want to piggyback on Prima's report on curriculum instruction. It was probably one of the most exciting meetings we've had. And the three takeaways for me were, don't be disappointed. It was, it was a fantastic meeting. The enthusiasm and energy at the meeting was off the charts. But the three takeaways for me were very important. One is we are fully implementing the strategic plan. The strategic plan infused the PD and every single presenter talked, you know, came back to some of the themes in our strategic plan. Two, we are dedicated to catching up our students to whatever learning gaps that may have arisen during the pandemic. The team is dedicated to doing that. And the third thing is we have so many exciting learning opportunities on the horizon for our students over the next year, two years, three years. Um, it's, it's going to be mind-blowing. I was, I was blown away this morning by the energy. Um, and our students are soon going to experience that themselves. So thank you. That's my report.
Any other things, uh, with Gribis?
The Policy Committee has seven policies and one regulation on tonight's agenda for our first reading. The first one is policy 2467, Severge Parents and Resource Family Parents has been revised to replace foster parents with resource family parent, along with several other minor language changes. Policy 5111, Eligibility of Resident slash Non-Resident Students has been revised to include language that addresses residence criteria for a student residing outside the district to be allowed to continue attending school in the district. The policy also provides that if the student continues to attend school in the district while living outside of the district for more than one year, the state will assume financial responsibility for tuition costs associated with the student's attendance. Policy 5116, Education of Homeless Children has been revised to include the requirement that the district submit an annual report to the Office of Homelessness Prevention, including each instance in which the district has made aware that a student enrolled in the district because the student's parents moved to, moved from one district to another district as a result of being homeless. Policy and Regulation 7432, Eye Protection was revised to provide more detail to, as to a school district's requirement to provide appropriate eye protective devices. Policy 8540, School Nutrition Programs has been revised to require the school district to provide eligible students with a breakfast after the bell program in which students who do not arrive in school, arrive to school in time for the school breakfast program are offered an opportunity to be served breakfast after the beginning of the school day. Policy 8550, Meal Charges Outstanding Food Service Bill has been revised to prohibit a school district from taking certain actions in response to a student, student's school meal bill being in the rears and requires a school district to take certain actions if a student owes money for the equivalent of five or more school meals. These required actions include, but not limited to, a determination by the school district to assess if the student is eligible for a free or reduced school meal, school district assistance to the parent in completing the school lunch application, and a school district determination if there are household issues causing the situation. The last one is, uh, Policy 8600, Student Transportation has been revised to address the new subsection in the Administrative Code that provides the Board of Education the option to adopt a provision in a policy that requires the compilation of a list of students transported by a school bus to school-sponsored activities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks to the Policy Committee for not tooling those out. I know I've done those videos. Um, next up, uh, Mr. Copeland, no, no report up here. All right now. Uh, Board Member remarks, additional comments, or otherwise? All right, seeing none. Moving on to 16 new business minutes. Uh, can I please get a motion to approve the minutes of the September 22nd, 2021 Public Work Session Action Meeting? Ms. Sacco, seconded by Mr. Gallo. Mr. Leaker? Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Dr. Morethy?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Abstained.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
And Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Item 17, new business. Uh, can I get a motion to approve Resolutions A through W, please? Dr. Morethy, seconded by Mr. Gallo. We'll call Mr. Leaker. Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except in 17A, I abstain from check number 104226.
Thank you. Dr. Morethy?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, not all, but I abstain on check number 104242.
Thank you. Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
And Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
18 new business personnel. Can I get a motion to approve Resolutions A through VB? Uh, Mr. Denise, seconded by Mr. De Silva? Mr. Gallo?
Yes, and I just want to, uh, point out on 18X, the, uh, option to work-based, uh, learning opportunities. Thank those businesses for participating with the program.
Dr. Morethy?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, and thank you to all the volunteers that have stepped up.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
And Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
19, public questions or comments. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Law 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. The section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. For that, please get a motion and open the meeting for public. Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Copeland. We are open to public.
Michelle Solzmann, Penn Stonewall Court. I have a question regarding quarantine. Um, for all the students that are home quarantining right now and not able to participate in school or sports, do we have any metrics as to how many of those children actually become ill?
I don't have those. You mean in terms of, like, the virus being transmitted to the student?
In terms of them testing positive during quar-
I don't have the exact numbers on me, but it has certainly occurred this school year. Yes.
Um, and my next question is regarding the budget. Since I know that the state has a rule, which I'm not 100% versed on, that involves a 2% cap, how, and therefore that eliminates the, um, involvement of voters to vote on the budget, how do parents, residents know what's in the budget and either express approval or disapproval since it's no longer on the ballot?
Starting in the spring, uh, usually when, in March, when the preliminary budget is approved by the Board of Ed to the, um, sections of the county office for their review, I begin doing budget presentation meetings. I usually do about three to four, starting in March, going through April. Uh, in each of those meetings, I take, uh, different section, different piece of the budget, explain in detail to the board and to members of the public. Uh, so that's the opportunity for when we, um, share and speak about anything that is specific to be included or put into the following year's budget.
At that time, do people have the opportunity to voice an objection or an approval? Or, so is it done post-approval or is it done, is there a time for input?
So as far as the time for input, at that time in March, when we first sent to the county, it's just a preliminary budget that's sent to them. Uh, we're still sharing that with members of the public, with members of the board. The Finance Committee has already seen it. The board has approved it. But it's still being shared at that time, so revisions still can be made. Um, in April, at the end of April, early May is when we have our final hearing and a bunch of adoption. The board, up until that, uh, final adoption hearing in the, again, late April, early May, the date always shifts a little bit, um, can still make changes up until then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to make notes? All right, seeing none.
Good evening. Danielle Ryan, 52 River Beach, Tars. Um, first, just to see, I never got a update on it. The September 1st meeting, do we have that video, of unedited video? And am I able to get a copy of that? Or is it uploaded? Excuse me?
Uh, I believe you have the following day or the day after it was uploaded to the website.
So it's on YouTube?
It's on, if you go to our, our district website underneath the Board of Ed tab, there's, there's, the videos are there.
Moving on. Um, and thank you. Um, on 10th, uh, October 8th, the New Jersey Department of Health issued their updated, um, health recommendations for K through 12 schools. Um, I know that there's a bunch of REC, um, students, athletes that are currently being quarantined. Um, when I reviewed that recommendation, uh, no mention of the REC programs is brought up. Um, I'd like to know why Mawa is doing that. It seems like an incredible overreach for the REC program, reporting directly to the schools rather than the parents doing so. And as already mentioned, I'm curious on how we're determining close contact in, in sports.
I just want to get this correct. So you're saying that it's an overreach? What's an overreach?
Why the REC department has anything to do with the school. The REC department's not run through the school. My child doesn't go to Mawa school, yet they can participate in, uh, Mawa sports. So I'm curious why the REC program has any, uh, communication with the school on the status of, of their athletes.
Well, it's, it's a public health matter, right? So it's a community issue? So, um, the reason we have actually worked closely with REC, um, as our other districts, with their town recs, is to streamline the process, right? To assist with communication, because, um, there have been parents when we first started the school year that were, um, sharing that there was a little confusion. So what we did as central office is we met with REC to streamline our procedures, to make sure that we knew which students were identified by REC's close contacts so that our school nurses knew who those students were.
Okay, so the REC program, just so I know, for the winter, when I don't participate, the REC program, when we sign up for REC, there was no mention of, of our information being shared with the school system.
Okay, I, uh, uh, the, what REC does is they provide us with those names because it's a community health matter.
So, so again, we're just like, it's lawlessness. We just do whatever we want.
I call it a partnership, um, and at that point-
A partnership that nobody-
I'm, I'm going to answer your question. Um, what was happening, and what Dr. Ferr shared, was that there was confusion along the lines of if REC told somebody they were close contact, then they didn't understand what to do with school. And then with school, we're fortunate enough that we're able to zoom students in so they can still access their education as opposed to being out of school and then getting materials that they have to work on on their own. So in order for us to do it in a seamless fashion, we, we asked if we could have that partnership so we can then start to engage an educational plan for the students who are in quarantine. Because whether you're quarantined in, in sports, or whether you're quarantined here, whether you're quarantined in church, whatever it may be, that's something that we need to follow. So just because you're quarantined in an outside activity, that doesn't mean that you can still come into school because you're still deemed to close contact. That's specific to the New Jersey Department of Health guidelines. So that's something that we need to make sure that we're honoring that specific process and we're engaging the educational plan so the kids are then supported while they're in school.
And the parents had the opportunity to, if they were close contact, they would just like, even if I was, uh, my student with a close contact, not in a REC sport, but just in life, I would then contact the school and you would send me over to the zoo.
You're absolutely right.
I'm having a trouble being told what, what occurred this week with, um, people having to be quarantined. How, without us agreeing to, you said you created a partnership. There was no communication to the parents that they were going to be, that you guys were joining this partnership. And in addition to that, the students that, um, are quarantined, I have know of one instance of the cheer squad. It's a blanket, the whole squad is, is infected, or not infected, is a close contact, even though they weren't literally, by your definition, weren't close contacts. I'm curious how we're just having like a blanket and eliminating all these students from being in person. And it's hard on them. They're, they're teenagers or, or pre-teens. Like, now they're being taken away from their friends for another week, 10 days, whatever it is.
I understand. Um, our school nurses aren't conducting the contact tracing for REC, right? So they do the contact tracing for our school district when there is a student who's been on site and tested positive. Um, REC does their contact tracing. So as they complete their contact tracing, then they provide to us who those close contacts are.
I understand, but this was a blanket. The whole team got quarantined. Meanwhile, there were people who weren't even there. They were on the list of these people who were a close contact. They weren't there. So that's not-
So along the lines of your disagreement with the process of REC, I guess that you can engage REC and then they can talk you through their specifics. Unfortunately, I can't speak to the REC program.
Okay, but you're part of that partnership.
Unfortunately, I can't speak to the REC program. Thank you for your-
The answer is yes.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback on what she just said. Um, Lou Latito, 44 on the road. Mr. Copeland, uh, you're involved in REC. I don't have any kids in REC.
Mr. Latito?
Yes.
You can direct your comments this way.
Okay, but I'm going to ask him because he is involved in REC.
As we sit here, he is a trustee of the Board of Ed.
Yes, okay.
If you want to go to his, his, his Mawa, you, you Sports Booster meeting, you're more than-
I'll be more to, but it's also piggyback. Why wouldn't that information be disclosed to the parents? That your partnership? That, that's what I'm asking. I, I think it's a valid question.
Brett, you're, you're more than welcome to engage.
As Ben mentioned, um, tonight, I'm sitting here as a Board of Ed.
Yes, I understand. I appreciate you answering.
Thing I want to say, Lou Latito, if you'd like to talk about what we do at TMYSP, I'd no problem having that conversation with you there, Mr. Leaker.
I, I would love to, just-
I'm more than happy to have that conversation, but I'm not going to have to-
I would love to, because I'm just curious. I mean, I just don't understand why. I mean, if that kid's through REC and everything's been pretty much disclosed, and I just, to me, this is just mind-boggling. It just seems like it's, okay, who's watching? Big Brother's watching, you know, what else we're doing? Um, I got another question. Uh, I understand the school mandates and all these things and everything. And I know the school has the best interest for the kids. You guys do a great job. An honorable job. I've said that in the past and I will say it again. But it's also the job of the board and its administration for the well-being and safety of the students. Is that correct? Is that, is that a fair statement? Yes, you're shaking your head, yes. Okay, so I've been up here in the past talking about masks and everything. Would the school board be interested in doing a study? Random study of masks, sending it to a lab? Random study of masks, sending it to a lab. 10 masks per school in partnership. Wait, parents forming a committee, sending it to the lab and see what comes back underneath. If it comes back clean, guess what? Masked are good. But if it comes back with a high bacteria rate, then as a school board, and we're looking for the safety and health of our students, would we stand up to Governor Murphy's mandate? Or are we just gonna say, no, that's a mandate? And the next thing is, it's been presented in the past with the oxygen level. Happen if students start bringing in these oxygen monitors? And then start saying, well, my oxygen's down to 80 or it should be at 95 or 100? Would they be allowed to pull the mask down to breathe? Or they all would have to run to the nurse? I'm just, you know, from health reasons, just asking these questions.
As has been stated here before, we're following the government's mandate.
I know, I understand that.
So we could send masks out and he would really not look at anything we do. We could send him a letter, he wouldn't even see the letter. So at the end of the day, until Governor Murphy decides that the executive order's gonna go away and the masks can come off, we're gonna be masked?
So if the bacteria rate after one day was extremely high, random kids, you'd be all fine, you could all sleep at night?
I didn't say I'd be fine with it, could sleep at night.
I understand that.
I was simply saying we have the state mandate, we're required to follow it.
So, but is it the safety and health of our students? So we're overlooking that? That's all I'm concerned about. I understand mandates, and I say, I understand, I have to follow it too. I'm not, I agree, we have to follow it. But I look at students and I'm saying if there's issues, medical issues occurring, like I said, if it all comes back clean, nobody has a leg to stand on. But if it comes back, hey, bacteria is high, whatever it may be, oxygen levels are low, then you know what? Are we gonna be the leaders like we are on some of these programs that you're presenting? Or are we gonna sit back and say, and hide behind a mandate? That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Kathy Eden, 75, St. Alexander Road. I would just like to thank the board for supporting Governor Murphy's mask mandate and keeping my daughter safe when kids are still being exposed to COVID that aren't able to get vaccinated. And I know that the mask mandate keeps my daughter in school and it reduces remote learning. And the studies have shown in-person learning is more, is better, obviously, for our students and our kids. And I believe, and a lot of people at home believe, that these masks are keeping us safe. And whether there was a survey that was sent out that I did not participate in because I didn't realize that we were gonna be using the data from that survey to represent the community when people come up here and say, the community wants a mask mandate. I did not facilitate that survey because I didn't realize we were gonna be making policy or using that information from that to warrant no masks. So if I knew that, I would have filled it out. So I would like to say thank you to the board for supporting Governor Murphy's mask mandate. And if there comes a time when he does reduce that executive order, that mask mandate, that we consider the safety and health of our children and if the pandemic is over or not, and then we can make sound decisions based upon science and the children's safety on how we create policy going forward, if masks are required. And if Governor Murphy decides that we no longer need to have it, then we still have a thoughtful, educated, respectful discussion about the use of masks, if warranted. Thank you very much.
Evening, my name's Josh Bornstein. I live at 10 West Year Haven Road here in Mawa. And I want to thank the board, I want to thank the district for knowing what they know and knowing what they don't know. I used to be a school principal myself. And when making decisions about the health and safety of our students, I knew what I knew about education. And I knew that I didn't know all that I needed to know about health and safety. And so when we were designing our fire and safety protocols, I called our fire department. And they came and they sat with us. And when I was talking about our health protocols, our school physician sat with us. I was doing this all before there was global pandemic presence. I was here at one of our meetings a few weeks ago when a gentleman who introduced himself as a firefighter was giving advice about the neurological impact of masks. I love my firefighters. I don't turn toward for neurological advice. And I respect the board's willingness to engage in the democratic process in which we all give our opinions and also recognizing when expertise is generally expertise. So, thank you.
Michelle Solzner, 10 Stonewall Court. This is piggybacking on masks. If and when the mandate is lifted, I know you guys really value the NJDOH and the CDC. What is gonna happen if the NJDOH recommends masking and the CDC recommends masking, but the state drops the mandate? We're gonna find ourselves right back where we were last summer. So what kind of metrics are we gonna be looking for? Decision-making, we can be looking for moving forward? Because if we're constantly relying on recommendations, we may, you know, we might as well tattoo these things to our face. I don't know, I don't know the way out of this situation if we don't start standing on our own two feet. So I want to know what data you guys would be looking at in order to make that decision, which I'm not saying is an easy decision, I know it's not. That's why the optional has always been there so that parents can feel comfortable sending their children to school. But there may come a time, as is the case, for instance, with the travel mandate, like you spoke of. There is no travel mandate in New Jersey right now from the state. The mandate that you guys are enforcing is based on a recommendation from the NJDOH. So we may have another situation where that occurs, and I would like to know what's gonna happen.
So we would, I'll respond and you can add on. We would, do what we have been doing is working with our district physician to see where we go from there, right? I don't know what the data is going to look like in terms of our transmission rate locally. What I do know is the person who fills out the, all of the contact tracing paperwork for the Department of Health is that the transmissions that have occurred in our district were students who weren't wearing masks, right? So that's what we know right now. I don't know what it's going to look like. I feel like everyone has expressed...
Wait, in school, they weren't wearing masks?
In terms of they were eating lunch.
Well, there's no other way to get food in your mouth.
Absolutely. Or, or they were hanging out with friends outside of school, right? So all those things that were maskless and that's how the virus was transmitted from one student to another. But we don't know what this is going to look like. I, I agree with you. I don't think anyone wants to wear masks. But the health and safety of students supersedes everything else in terms of our school district, for right now.
How about the transmission of other diseases? I mean, people get stomach viruses. They, I had a, one of my kids threw up 20 times in a day. No one cared, no one called. It went through the whole classroom. This is this year. Kids have strep outbreaks. You're gonna have half a class is out, whoa. Are those things not important anymore? Do we not care about the health and safety of those kids? Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to wrap my head around illnesses and importance of illness. And we all know that schools are Petri dishes. They always have been, they always will be. And there are other things that children get that land them in the hospital with dehydration, infection, high fever. I mean, we could go on and on forever like this. Are we, if there's a flu outbreak, are we gonna quarantine the class or is it only COVID?
Your original... I'm kidding.
I'm done, go ahead.
Your original question was specific to what are we gonna do when the state or when things start to change? And unfortunately, there's no concrete answer of what we're gonna do. Because as Dr. Ferr shared, there are a number of things that we would have to look at, whether it's the CALI score or where we are at as a region, lean on our district physician, a number of different things. So I can't tell you if this or that because there's so many moving parts to this, to this model. Along the lines of us not caring about sickness. Now, I know you know that that's not the truth.
Run fake, there's different values put on it.
So along the lines of, I understand what you're saying. But along the lines of the focus, I won't even say value, the focus of all the sicknesses, as of right now, where we're directed and where we're mandated on is for COVID. Along the lines of any of my kids getting sick in the district? I don't want any of my kids getting sick in the district. Am I gonna quarantine a classroom because there's a stomach virus? I don't have that in my plans whatsoever. But along the lines of this, of this specific epidemic, what I can say is we're doing our very, very best to get as close to normal as humanly possible. That's why, that's why Dr. Ferr said, along the lines of the travel quarantine, we are looking at it. And that's not just lip service. We're looking at it because we understand the discrepancy that on one website it says there's nothing at state level, but on another website of the same department, it says that we encourage you to follow the CDC guidelines. So all of these things cause nothing but frustration for everyone, and I understand that. But along the lines of our focus of student health, we are focused on student health, no matter what it is. Strep throat, lice, stomach virus, it doesn't matter. But at this point, the mandates are locked into COVID.
We're just all trying to find a way out of this. Because I'm sure you are too.
I agree, we all are.
We're trying to see an end goal. And, you know, by saying that every transmission was because they didn't have masks on, well, kids are kids. They play, they're in sports teams, they're in truce state. We can't keep them locked up. It's just not, it's not feasible. And then you quarantine all these healthy kids and then they can't participate, not only in their activities, they can't go to school. And they're basically sitting home waiting to see if they get sick. That's what they do. They sit home and they wait to see if they get sick, which is not healthy. Psychologically, it's not healthy to just sit there and wait to see what happens. So I know it's difficult, but, and I know we all want a way out. I'm just trying to see ways to get to that point. So, thank you.
Look, Phil Ross, One Men A Road. You know, I was not able to be in attendance at the last Board of Ed meeting because I was at the urgent care with my daughter. She had an injury. We were waiting in the lobby for some 45 minutes. And, you know, she was wearing a mask. And then when we went inside, they put the oxygen sensor on her finger. I had the picture right here and we did it twice because I couldn't believe how low it was. Her percent of oxygen was 0.79. Oh, 0.7, I'm sorry. 0.79%, okay? So it was like, you know, it was 79%. That's supposed to be a full 1.0. Or, you know, it should at least be 97 to 99%. And she was at 79%. When we removed the mask, her oxygen levels went back up. You know, this, this is a long-term situation. I mean, we're having these kids with these masks on for a long time in class. Do we have any evidence? Do we have any studies that show what the long-term effects are on our children with this oxygen deprivation for all this amount of time? I mean, and another situation occurred when she was sick. She had allergies. So, you know, we did the whole protocol, took her to the doctor Monday, waited for the COVID test. She got that, she was fine. Sent her to school on Wednesday. And she, it was, it was a waste for her. She had to leave constantly because she couldn't breathe because she had a runny nose with a mask on from allergies. So they had to keep her out of school after that because she couldn't do anything, couldn't breathe. So, you know, these are situations that we really have to consider. And again, what are the long-term effects of this oxygen deprivation for our children? So I just want you guys to think about that. Thank you.
Hi, Rachel Kirk. Just a quick question. If a child's out for something other than COVID, are they allowed to zoom into school?
Now, the Zoom links are for the students who are quarantined for an extended period of absence.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, folks. My name is Duke Golds. I live at 145 Third Street here in town. Just want to offer a little bit of a different perspective. You know, I do a lot here in town. I'm out and about, I see a lot of folks. I try and do a lot of good things. In the past month, I've had about, like a handful, like six students come up to me, out of the blue. And they thanked me, okay? And it's kind of weird. It kind of freaked me out the first, like, two or three times it happened because they come up like deer in headlights. And I'm like, what the heck is gonna happen here, you know? But they thanked me for speaking up about this because they feel that they've been silenced. They are hurting emotionally inside from this. I mean, some of them cried. They, I mean, like, they were swelled up with tears. They were crying, they were saying, I am the 72% that nobody hears. I, you know, we are the people that are hurting and we are silenced.